Yeah, once you get off that, there's like nowhere to stop.
Well, I'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. If able, please stay and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, due to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. In accordance with governing body rules and procedures, city reserves right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. I did have a sign up sheet here on, but I have no one signed up. Would anybody like to come forward? Okay. Okay, go ahead, sir. Come up forward and give your name and address for the record.
My, uh, I'm gonna talk during the, one of the agendas. Do I have to sign up?
Okay, you don't have to sign up, but if it's gonna be on the agenda, just please, please raise your hand and then item comes up. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Stone, come forward, sir. Name and address for the record.
All right, I'll save my seconds for later, but I did wanna mention Forty-seventh Street has a speeding problem I heard in Owen Heights's block party recently, so they're requesting a speed bump or maybe some better patrols out there. I thought I'd mention that while the chief is present. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to come forward? Okay, sir, come, come up forward and name and address for the record.
Hope everybody's doing great today. Rob Arnold, sixty-one forty-six Hemlock. I just wanna get an update on the Water One project, 'cause I thought it was supposed to last like a month and I thought it started May first. Now we're almost in the middle of August. And the metal, the metal plates are destroying all the tires of our cars. There's concrete, you know, just randomly on the ground, asphalt, you know, or some, you know, just random rocks and whatnot all over the place. Sidewalks are closed. Just like an update on that, please.
Update on, okay.
Yeah, unless, unless I missed it, 'cause I haven't seen any on, online. Thank you.
We usually get one at the, sometime during the council meeting, so we have our, are you gonna be able to stay for the meeting or?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get that addressed before we leave today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to come forward this time? Okay, I see no one else coming forward, so we'll close out the public portion of the meeting. And next item up would be the consent agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council will accept a request, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Considering I only have one item on there, does anybody wanna talk about that before we call for a motion? Okay, see, I would entertain a motion for that.
Mister Mayor.
Ms. Hands, go ahead.
I move that the council approved consent agenda, item number one.
Okay, we have a motion, I have a second. Shadrach.
Mister Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is the mayor's report, and I always like to say a little bit about what's been going on the last couple of weeks. And I'd like to start off my report by thanking President Hands and Vice President Yadrich for running the meeting and, and holding, attending events and doing all the things in my absence while I was on vacation. So, thank you for that. I also had a presentation of my pictures from my vacation that I was gonna share with everybody this evening, but Mister Engel said I couldn't. So afterwards, if you wanna see me for pictures of me petting an alligator and a stingray and a dolphin and some really cool pictures, please see me after me. Okay, several of our council and staff were able to attend the Merriam-Grand Station ribbon cutting. I wish I could've been there. This project has truly been transformative, and Direct Development's done a phenomenal job in bringing in the project well ahead of schedule. So, thank you for doing that. A couple of council members attended the gallery opening at the MCC. You can still see the art there for a few more weeks. A couple of council members met Mister Engel and prepared tonight's agenda. A couple council members attended the Stephanie Thompson Going Away Event. She was RHR Director and she'd be missed but not forgotten. Both I and a council member attended the Sherwood Forest Block Party. It's always great to talk to our residents. They even had a program with a guy that, that was, showed him rescue birds. So, they were, they talked about, they were real excited about the grocery store it's coming. I attended the Merriam Car Cruise Night. Lots of great cars showed up. There was music and food, and I got to talk about two of my favorite things, Merriam and cars. So, I even heard about, even at the car show, about the excitement of the grocery store. So, we'll sure be glad to see that when it does come to fruition. That's, concludes my report. And of course, I've been gone, so is there, anybody have anything else that they may have done while I was in my absence? Okay. Well, thanks for holding down the fort. Next item up this evening is council items, and the first one is considered changes to the Merriam Municipal Code, Chapter Two.
I'm, I'm just gonna go ahead and kick this off. The clerk's gonna make this presentation, but this is, this is what staff came up with as a result of our conversation we had last meeting where we talked about the potential need for an extra position in the budget. What we heard from council was to see if we could go back and figure out if there were some policy changes that we could perhaps enact that could either prolong or eliminate the need for that position. This is, I think, our attempt to do so. We worked with the city attorney. Clerk did a lot of work, legwork on seeing what our neighbors do in terms of these requests, and surprisingly, we hadn't addressed any of these policies since nineteen ninety-four. So it was time to update them anyway. So, I'm gonna turn it over to the city clerk to share with you this next item.
Thank you, Mister Engel.
Thanks. All right, well, let's just go ahead and get started. Yeah, staff's been busy the last couple of weeks checking out our records code and trying to make some changes to hopefully mitigate the issue. In your agenda packet, there's many documents. The first one is the current code. What I wanted to do is just kinda go over what the proposed changes are to the code. Then we'll go over the fee schedule, proposed changes, some changes to our processes that we've made, and then finally, just the comparison to see what our neighbors are doing. So the first thing we're gonna look at is the current code. There was an attachment titled Current in your packet. And so the first, the code was, is a little disjointed, so we've proposing to reorganize it. So it talks more about the statement of the policy. It talks about then, you know, the custodian duties, and then it'll talk about the fees. So, the first proposed change is for section two dash one five two, the procedures. It basically says that we have procedures that we will abide by. Our procedures are in the code. It, this last sentence says such procedures shall be posted in the, each office keeping and maintaining public records. We have many record custodians. I've never seen the procedures posted, so it's not really our practice, plus our procedures are in our codes. So we would just propose to eliminate that last sentence. The next item in that section, number three, says records, records custodian shall adopt and apply procedures. Again, the procedures are in the code, so we don't need separate procedures other than, they're all right here in the code. Then we'll move down to number nine. This is a section that states there's set fees in the code. I'm sure the city attorney would agree that we, we really don't ever wanna have set fees in our code, because as fees change, then we have to change codes, and that requires ordinances. This talks about the record custodian shall notify the requestor prior to commencing a search of their estimate, of their estimate, of which their records will be over a hundred dollars. I would expect that if I did a records request, I would wanna know well before the hundred dollar mark that it was gonna cost me money. So we will remove that. We are going to let people know whenever there is a fee involved. We're not gonna wait until they get to that hundred dollar mark. Typically, what happens, if we do that, then we have the records and we give them the price, and they don't ever pick up the records. So we've done the work and we don't get paid. So, we're just gonna, just another one of those fees that we're eliminating completely out of the code. All right, number eleven. This one says the record custodian may exercise their discretion to reduce or waive any inspection or copying fees when such fees is in the public interest. Suggests removing this. It gives the records custodians a little, a lot of discretion. So while one might think, you know, this is in the public interest, I'm not gonna charge, we don't want another records custodian charging, so it's just gonna eliminate that discretionary option. Okay. Any questions about that section? It's pretty straightforward. Okay. All right, moving on. Section two point one five three talks about the inspection of public records. Moving down to number three, it says, "A written request is sufficient if it reasonably describes the records sought. In instances where the records can, requestor cannot provide sufficient information, the custodian shall assist in making an identification." We already do this in practice. An example of that would be if we received a phone call from a resident saying, "I need something that shows where my property lines are." Then we would, sounds like you need a copy of your survey or a plat. We, we may have that information. If you fill out a records request, we will look that up. If we have the, the, you know, survey or the plat, we would provide it. That's an example of what that is. Plus, it maybe could be misinterpreted, where people are looking for something that doesn't really exist, the record doesn't exist, and they say, "Well, you have to help me figure that out," you know, even if it's not an existing record. So it's, we're just suggesting to eliminate that. All right, number four is another instance where we have set fees. In here, it says, "No inspection fee shall be charged, the requestor, if the actual cost of locating the records pursuant to the request is less than four dollars, or in the case of multiple requests brought by the same person on behalf of the same person, where the actual cost of locating records pursuant to requests made over a twenty-four period is less than four dollars." I, I'm not really sure what that means. And the whole issue of multiple requests by the same requestor or others on behalf, and it's probably just a good idea to eliminate that. In addition, it has a set four dollar fee. So, we don't wanna bind ourselves to set fees when we're doing records requests. Number five says, "No inspection will be assessed when a denial is, request is made," which we would not do that anyway. We wouldn't charge someone if we denied it, 'cause we wouldn't do any work for the, for the request. And then the second sentence, "The records custodian, upon making denial, shall forward the denial to the city attorney." It's likely the city attorney's already been consulted before we deny a records request, and as we know from the last meeting presentation, that costs everybody money when we have to contact the city attorney. So eliminating that would also eliminate additional fees that we're incurring by having to involve the city attorney on that. Okay, that was all on, those are the procedures. Any questions? Pretty, pretty straightforward. Okay. The next section is section one five four. This is a procedure for copies of public records. And we are looking at a sentence in number four. It's again, it's saying, "No copy fee shall be assessed when multiple copies of the records have been prepared for free and public distribution." We are keeping that sentence, but the part we are going to eliminate is, "Or when the record custodian determines that the cost of charging and handling the fee exceeds the cost of providing the record with no charge." Again, it's another one of those kinda discretionary things where this person, this custodian may charge, this one doesn't. So just eliminating that, so it's very clear what the expectation is. Or, again, if someone requested and got a record here from a different department, they didn't charge, and now you're charging me. So we wanna keep it consistent, so we're removing that section. And the same thing, "No copying fee is assessed when a denial is made." Obviously, we would not charge someone if we didn't make a copy or we didn't provide the record. And this again says that upon making the denial, you have to contact the city attorney. But again, we would've already done that, so just eliminating that. Okay. Then the next section, we have proposed changes is in the fees, section two dash one five eight. This talks about the city clerk is authorized, it talks about, you know, providing cash and how to transmit and how to, you know, put the money into our accounting system. So this is basically accounting practices that we do internally. We don't need this in the code. This is an internal accounting process that doesn't need to be in the code. So we would just eliminate that part of that. The next is two point one five nine, inspection fees. We're talking about fees here. Again, it says, "When a request, when a, where a request has been made for inspection of any public record which is readily available to the record custodian, there shall be no inspection fee to the requestor." Again, that's, again, that's dictating when we can and cannot charge fees. And it's likely that if it's a record that is readily available, we're just gonna provide it to them. I mean, it's electronic. It would take, you know, just a few minutes to provide that, so it doesn't really need to be in there. We would just give it to them if it's readily available. Okay, and then section B, it basically just says, "In all cases not covered in the subsection, a per hour inspection fee is set forth on the fee schedule as described in two dash one one seven." We are just rewording that on the new stuff just to refer to the actual fee schedule instead of having all those references to the code. So basically, it's, the fees for records are on the fee schedule. They're not in the code, and that's gonna make it cleaner. Okay. Let's see. Our last section here is the payment of, prepayment of fees. We are going to eliminate item B, which says, again, "Prepayment of inspection or copying fees shall be required when in the best interest of the custodian, the fees are expected to exceed a hundred dollars." Again, we're gonna let them know when it costs them anything. We're not gonna wait till we get to the hundred dollar mark. And then it does say, "No records request is available until the prepayment is made," and that is kind of what we would do. Here is what it's gonna cost you. If you want those records still, then we'll proceed with the request, but we don't do any work until we receive the estimated payment. And then there's another section, one point six two, on payment. The sentence says, "All fees will be paid to the city clerk whenever a cumulative amount of fees totals a hundred dollars or more." So again, that's another accounting practice that we do internally, and we don't really need to say how we handle the money in the code, because we have accounting practices that do that. So that is what we are proposing to remove. Is there any questions, comments, feedback? It's pretty straightforward. Okay.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Yadrach.
How many record requests have we gotten since our last meeting? Do you?
Um, I would say maybe five or six total. These are all requests.
I, I, to be clear, to address what we were speaking about last meeting, there are formal records requests and then there are informal records requests. So when we talk about formal records requests, that's following a process spelled out in statute. Requests that are not covered in that way, I'll just share a couple of examples, 'cause I knew I would be asked this question tonight. Last Monday was, or that last meeting was on the twenty-eighth. That evening, before I got home, I had a records request, requesting a document. It was readily available. I provided it. Tuesday, the next day, the twenty-ninth, I received a records request for an email sent to the city council. It was readily available. I provided that. On Wednesday, the thirtieth, the police chief, the finance director, and the assistant to the city administrator received a request about a process question. On Thursday, the thirty-first, IT received a request about a, I guess, policy decision or a process question. On, also on the thirty-first, I received a request for some legal information about a case and invoices having to do with the case. Again, nothing to do with the individual requesting it. Because I was out of the office on vacation, that request was duplicated the next day to the assistant city administrator on Friday, the first. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six requests from Monday to Friday of that week. On Sunday, a council member was requested to provide some documents. And then by Tuesday, this same individual returned just two open records requests. So while there's only a handful of open records requests, there's still the draw on staff time to answer the curiosities of individuals that just email city staff. Again, the reason that all of these things were routed through open records and routed through my email is so that I have some sort of, so I know what staff is doing. So I know what the draw on staff time is for staff to answer, again, one individual that's far exceeding the draw of service level from eleven thousand one hundred ninety-nine other residents. So, a little bit of a long-winded answer there, but again, when you have just two open records requests from someone, but you have seven requests for records, it's a little misleading just to answer the first half of that question.
Thank you, Mister Engel.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mister Silver, you have a question?
I have a question for Mister Engel. Do you think changing these codes will be more beneficial to the city than hiring a full-time person to handle these?
I'm convinced that it's worth the try as opposed to spend all of the money to hire a person immediately. I am doubtful that this individual has, will, will not continue to make requests. But I think it's worth trying to do it this way, to charge one individual for their draw on staff time as opposed to charge eleven thousand one hundred ninety-nine residents for one individual's draw on staff time. I can't tell you I won't be back in two weeks, two months, twelve months, two years, saying that it didn't work out, but I think I, I am, I'm okay with this route for the time being. But I can't, I'm not trying to be evasive, but I can't, for right now, I'm okay trying this.
Go ahead, Mister Silver.
I just wanna say, it sounds like we're, we're trying to be accommodating for requests that are, for records that are easily attainable, and we're not forcing every request through an official open records request chan, or ask, or formal documentation.
If, if you want a docu, well.
I'm, I'm just saying, we're, we're trying to be amenable and we're trying to.
Where, where we can be and when appropriate, sure. But again, if it's one individual and this is the eighth time we've heard from them in ten days, we've gotta somehow funnel those things down into some sort of appropriate way to measure them, to gauge them, to make sure that it's not a draw on staff's time. And to make sure that staff fully understands the role of a records custodian versus being someone's personal chat GPT.
And are we, are we, have any of the requests come through the form that we set up to help expedite staff time?
I believe that there was an attempt to do that and it did not work. We are still trying to fine tune that. So yes, I believe there was an attempt to do that. Maybe multiple, I'm not sure. But, but yes, I believe there was.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Next, we're gonna look at the proposed changes that staff has come up with, and that was the document entitled Draft. The first section, section one point five oh, is basically the statement of policy. It refers to the state statute there. We are wanting to add some additional language. The first sentence being, "The act is to be liberally construed and applied to promote the purpose." The policy does not require any certain record, any, does not require the city to retain any public record or authorize the destruction of public records. So that's, we have a records retention schedule and that's completely separate. So it needs to be in there, because people are saying, "Well, why don't you have that record?" Well, we may not have the record, because it's already been destroyed based on our records retention schedule. So that's a totally separate policy. The next sentence says, "The city is not required, in response to requests for information, to compile information or statistics from raw data, nor answer questions about the content of public records." Records requests are for documents and records. They're not for information. They're not for questions, inquiries, that types of thing, which is, tends to be what we are getting a lot of. A lot of just questions and inquiries, not asking for actual documents, i.e. records. So we're gonna add that to the code. The rest of this is just kinda realigning it, so there's not much change on those sections. The next section is in regard to the procedure of how we handle records and records requests. We are going to add a number eleven that basically says that when a record, requested record contains a material which is not subject to disclosure, in other words, it's exempt under the state statute, the custodian will redact or delete and make the material available only to the requestor, material which is subject to disclosure. This lets them know that if, you know, we may have to go through and redact or delete information that's not subject under cora. Further says, "If the public record is not subject to the disclosure because it pertains to an identifiable individual, meaning names, addresses, the city shall delete the identifying portions and make available to the requestor any remaining portions which are." which are subject to disclosure. It says, however, if the request is for a record pertaining to a specific individual or to such a limited group of individuals that the individual's identities are reasonably ascertainable, the city will not disclose those records which pertain to such individual or individuals without first obtaining a legal opinion from the city attorney. So sometimes we get records that are very specific to people. Portions of those are not, you know, allowed to be disclosed. So we just want everyone to understand that, you know, you may get a record that's redacted and there's a reason for that. We're not trained to hide things. It's that by law, we are not allowed to disclose it. This is kind of the same thing on the inspection. It's just a repeat of some of this. Number three, we're going to add, it says a written request is sufficient if it reasonably describes, describes the records sought and contains the requester's name, address, and a statement that the requester does not intend to use the names contained derived from the records for the purpose of selling or offering for sale property or service. They will not give, sell, or otherwise make available to any person the list of names or addresses contained in the records that we provide them or allowing, allowing that person to sell or sale. So basically, this is straight from the state statute. And the, we have the, our online form has this language. And we also have a paper form that has this language. So if, if I give you a list of names and addresses, you're not allowed to go sell that to a company or whatever. So this also kind of covers the, the part where you don't have to use the record request form that we provide. You don't have to use the portal. But we do need you to say, I will not sell this information to someone else. So they can do a handwritten note if they wanted, but it has to have this language on there. Let's see, and then number four. Says when a public rec, when a requested public record contains material not subject to disclosure, the record custodian will redact or delete that material and make available. So it's the same thing. It just repeats for the inspection and the copies. Okay. Moving on. Section one five seven is procedures for copies of records. It's basically a repeat of the same for inspections. We put the same language for inspection. If you're going to look at the record, you can't, you know, take a picture with your phone and sell those lists. You can't get a list and sell it. It's the same thing. And then number six is the same, exact same language for the inspection as the copies. And then the fee schedule, we've just reworded that. It says all fees for, and charges for inspections and or copying of public records shall be established by the governing body and published in the city fee schedule, which may be amended from time to time. So it's just making a reference to that. This was the section, the previous one, that referred to a section of the code, which that section then says you do a fee schedule. So it just kind of cleans it up and you don't have to go back and forth. It says basically the fees are on the fee schedule and we can change that from time to time. Inspection fees, two point one five nine. When a request has been made for inspection of any public record which is readily available to the custodian, the records custodian may waive the fee. So this is about the only section. The previous one said they shall waive the fee. This gives a little discretion. An example of this, of why we might not waive the fee would be if we had a, say, ten or forty page, pages of documents and a requester just wants to look at it for inspection. They are allowed to take a picture with their phone. They are allowed to bring in their own personal scanner if they wanted to, to scan those records. So staff isn't doing that. However, if it takes them thirty to forty minutes to scan those and staff has to wait with them as they're, you know, handing them the records, we might charge for that. Because it could take some staff time to do that. They're not asking for a copy. We're just saying, here they are. But, you know, obviously, we have to supervise to make sure they don't take the record or, you know, damage it. And if it took time to scan it, we would want to be able to charge for that. The old one said if it's readily available and you come in and sit there for two hours and scan, then we don't, we can't charge. So this does give us the ability to charge for that type of service. Okay. Okay. Moving on to this, it's the same section. Those are inspection fees. It just says in all other cases, the record inspection fee will be charged at the rate established by the governing body when required by the record custodian. So again, that's just referring back. If, if any of those previous scenarios don't meet, then it's on the fee schedule. And it does say a minimum charge is set forth for inspections. Previously, that minimum inspection fee was ten dollars. On the new fee schedule, it's twenty five dollars. And then adding number three, it just says if the records custodian is required to inspect the records to ensure we abide by QRA. So in other words, they just want to look at the record, but we have to go through those records to make sure that there's nothing in there that's not, you know, disclosable, then we would charge a fee for the redaction of that. And then the number four is kind of the same thing. And it requires us to redact. So basically, the one says if we have to look at it, we can charge for that. And then the fourth, number four says if we have to go in and redact, then we're going to be charged for that. A lot of times people say, well, I don't want a copy of the record because they think it's going to be charged. I just want to look at it. Well, it doesn't really make a difference whether you look at it or get a copy. If there's information that we can't disclose, we have to go through there and, you know, redact the record. So we just wanted that in there so that when people are requesting and we say there's going to be charges, they understand the, the reasons why we have to charge. So it's just very clear. Okay. The next section is section two point one six zero, the copy fee. It's the same as the inspection fee. It again says if we're required to inspect, we can charge you for that. If we have to redact or delete, you could be charged for that. And that is basically it on that. Do we have any questions on that?
Yeah, I have, yeah, just a moment. I have a question. It doesn't seem to address in the event that it says that they're not going to sell any of those information. If they, we were to find out that they had, what would be the penalty? Would that be a misdemeanor or would we, how would we handle that? I don't know. Hopefully, nobody would do that. But I'm just curious, what do we do if they don't abide by the request?
There are criminal penalties. I'd have to look at the statute to see exactly what those are. I can, I can look at that and get back to you.
There, there would be some ramifications, though I guess that's my point.
Right. If you make the attestation, then you disclose it. Yes, there are criminal penalties associated with it, so.
Got you. Thanks, sir. Okay. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Kuzma.
Yeah, so in, in the case that you do have to go through and redact records and consult with the city attorney, presumably that attorney time is billable to the requester as part of the requesting press, the fee schedule?
Is the attorney time billable? Yes. It would be.
Okay.
Okay. Ready to move on to fees?
Any other questions?
I, I do want to clarify. So if Julie comes to me and we're going to issue a denial based on my legal advice, we, we can't bill for the denial?
No. And it said that when a request is denied, there would be no charge. So that's kind of that situation. Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Any other questions? Yep, I guess moving on.
Okay. Moving on to fees. There has been recent changes to the state statute that allows us to change, uh, charge some different fees. And typically, we had kept that fee at twenty five dollars an hour because again, it was our belief that public records were public records and we wanted to provide those. But at, when costs continue to go up, that's not really a viable option anymore. So the new fee schedule would say the records request, if these fees apply to all staff time for searching, reviewing, redacting, sorting, providing access to, and copying records. Pretty inclusive. It's covering everything. These fees may be charged in any situation where greater than fifteen minutes of staff time is incurred while responding to a records request. We did not have a policy or statement previously. We had a general rule of thumb, which was if it took less than thirty minutes or less, we would provide that record at no cost. Because again, our belief is that we want to provide records. They're the public's records. But it's become a problem. And so we feel that maybe fifteen minutes seems a little more reasonable with the electronic records now. You know, it used to be paper records. We may have to go down and dig in the basement. Now we have so many things electronically that fifteen minutes is really a more reasonable time. Those were what staff would consider something that's readily available. You can provide it within fifteen minutes. So anything over fifteen, the clock starts running. And that would be direct staff costs. And we have direct staff costs defined as the statute says. Direct staff cost is determined based on the hourly rate at the lowest cost category of a staff reasonably necessary to provide access or to provide copies of the records. And we put the state statute right in there and that is the new legislation. So basically, this says if, as an example, we get a records request in, it's six or seven documents. There's stuff that needs to be redacted. Maybe someone's email, phone number, whatever. I could gather that record. I could give it to the intern and say, hey, I need you to go through these records. I need you to redact anything that has a name or a phone number, or a name or an email address. So again, that would be based on that staff's, staff person's rate. They wouldn't have to pay the higher rate of me doing it. I could delegate that to some lower cost employee.
I have a quick question about the fifteen minutes.
Yes.
Is it, is it the first fifteen minutes is always free? Or it's always free if it's less than fifteen minutes? So if somebody, if it takes twenty minutes to do, do you get charged for twenty minutes?
I would say the first fifteen minutes could be free. I mean, again, the goal is to provide public records. I mean, that's our transparency. You know, that's what we're trying to do here.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that.
It's a fair question. Yes.
Thanks.
And, you know, we have to allow a little bit of discretion to our records custodians as well.
Another question is fifteen minutes is total staff time? Not fifteen minutes from each staff person?
Total, yes.
Yeah, so some of these all-inclusive requests that we saw last week, give me all records.
Yes.
And you had to send that out to all eight record, what do we call them?
Record custodians.
Each one of them spent five minutes. That's forty minutes.
Yep.
Plus whatever time it took to do that. Okay. Minus the first fifteen minutes. But anyway, it could be substantial.
It could. Yes. That's why those any and all requests are, they take a lot of staff time. Costs a lot of money to provide those. Okay.
You want just a second? Go ahead, Ms. Silver.
All right, as long as we're in question and the answer.
That's fine.
My question. Can you explain the redaction process? Because I assume a lot of our records are digital at this point. So can you do the redaction in a PDF? Or do you literally have to print it out, redact, scan it, and then provide it?
With the PDF, you can redact electronically. Other, if it was a paper form that someone filled out, like a building permit, sometimes we get those paper. That might be something we'd have to wipe it out and make a copy or make a copy and wipe it out or something like that. So it, it kind of can go both ways. Just depends on the type of record, the format of the record, whether it's paper or electronic.
So a redaction could cost, this could include the cost of printing maybe multiple times?
Possibly, but that's not a very likely scenario just because, like I said, we have very few paper records anymore. So, yeah. Okay. So we're keeping the copy still at twenty five cents per page. So if they want a paper, it's cop twenty five cents per page. Plus, we will charge direct staff costs. So if they're wanting sixty five pages of documents and it takes, you know, forty five minutes for us to do that, they're going to be charged the twenty five cents per page plus the thirty minute fee. Everything else is basically direct staff cost. We did put the minimum inspection fee as twenty five dollars from ten dollars. And the only other increase would be for, it says copies to CD. Not too many people have CDs anymore. So we just have CD or other media devices. Many times I, I put records on flash drives. We get a lot of requests for attorneys. A lot of times they want records. We will put those on a flash drive, but we charge them. We did charge five dollars. We're going to increase that to fifteen dollars. And then, plus the direct staff costs. And then it does say records requests that are readily available and no more than fifteen minutes of staff time is incurred while responding. There's no charge. So it's fifteen minutes and they're readily available. So that is that. Any questions, feedback on that? Okay. The other, we looked at our process. As mentioned earlier, we have created a online records request process. Our website administrator's done a great job of that. We started out, it was just real basic. As we're getting into it, we find things that, hey, it would be really neat if it did this. So as we're working through this process, we're continuing to make tweaks. It is very nice that it kind of streamlines the process. They, all the requests come to me. I am able to look at the record. If it is a record for the police department, it has an option to forward that request to the police department custodian. It tracks the records requests. It, it creates, it's created workflows for others to help, you know, streamline the process. It also provides a workflow for a backup. If I'm not here, it's going to go to someone else after a certain period of time. So it doesn't get lost in the shuffle or forgotten about. It also has the ability for us to provide the cost estimate right there. So it comes in, we can say approve without fees and provide the record or we approve it with the fees and then we give them a cost estimate of what that fee is going to be. Another recent change to the state statute is that if we have communicated with an individual this record request is going to cost you sixty five dollars, we need a response from them if they're going to proceed with the request. If they fail to respond with us within three business days, then we can automatically withdraw the request. I've had many instances where people send big requests and want all of this information. And then when you tell them what it's going to cost, you don't hear from them again. So that takes time, too.
Real quick, three days is the amount of time that the city also has to respond. Is that correct?
Yes. So it's kind of, yeah, it matches. We have three days, business days to respond. They have three business days to get back with us if they want to proceed. So it'll be nice with the online process. We're hopefully going to get it to where, after the three days, we can go in and withdraw the request. And then we also have a record. This one was withdrawn. This one was answered, that kind of thing. Yes.
What counts as one business day? Like if I put in a request at nine AM versus a request at three PM?
It's the day following.
Okay.
So that, yeah. So it'd be the next day is when the clock starts.
Okay.
Yeah. It's after it's received.
Does that also include on weekends, like Saturday, Sunday?
Business days, business days. So that would, that, they put business days that way. It also would catch holidays. So again, it's not a business day if it's an official holiday. Let's see, we did implement the system early June. We've had approximately forty one requests come through. So folks are using the, the online process. We did have about four or five test requests, so, you know, we're not counting those. But like I said, it's, it's worked out very well. The workflow on it is good. It's able to track. We're able to provide links to download documents. So we have a share a file link that we can say. A lot of times their records are too large to email, so we can upload. upload them to a share file, and then they can go get them right there. So I think it's working out great. It has helped a little bit with streamlining, but we'll continue to make tweaks as we move along. And then, finally, we did look at other cities to see how we compared. And we did provide that information in your packet. We had Lenexa-Lewood, excuse me, Shawnee and Prairie Village. A couple of these cities had separate policies for records requests, most of them just mirrored state statute. But since we already have that in our code, it seems silly to create yet another policy outside of the code, so. But looking at their costs and their fees, I mean, the proposed fees we have now do seem more in line with what other cities are charging, so, you know, it's always good to just know that, are we, are we kind of in line with our neighbors? And it appears that we are, so. That is all I have for tonight. If council is good with all the changes, then we would bring back an ordinance at the next meeting with the code changes, and then also updates to the fee schedule. The state statute went into effect July first, so we can change our fees to reflect that language in the state statute.
Ms. Haines, go ahead.
How, how and who has the information about what staff charges, or the cost of staff is? Do you own that, or does everyone who is a records custodian have access to it? When they're doing the estimates?
Oh, for the direct staff cost?
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't have personal information of everyone's salary.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
So, again, when the record request comes in, we kind of have to say, okay, who is this going to go to?
Mm-hmm.
You know, are you able to do this records request? Yes, okay. Typically, I'll send it and say, you know, here's a records request, please keep track of your time. And so they, most of the staff is trained, to keep track of their time anyway, and so they'll say, you know, here's the record, it took me X number of, you know, minutes or X number of hours to prepare it. And then, again, right now it's twenty-five dollars an hour, so it's easy to calculate, but going forward, then we would have to figure out what that hourly rate would be.
So you're going to have to go back to HR every time, do you think?
Possibly, I mean, there's only, there's kind of a handful of staff members that typically take on, you know, that I send their requests to, because, you know.
Okay, thanks.
And for police records, they have a records custodian, so they already would know what that amount would be. They have one person, basically. Okay?
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Lee.
So it sounds like the form is getting better, and we're, I mean, it, the whole idea was that it's supposed to help expedite staff time and reduce the amount of time it takes staff to perform records requests.
Yes.
And while I'm sure it's not perfect, and there's still hiccups to be sorted out, it's working fairly well for some requests at least.
Yes, I'm actually very pleased with the process, and probably should have done it a very long time ago. So it's actually working out really well.
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for our clerk?
Okay, we will get this in ordinance form and bring it back to you next meeting, along with the fee schedule update.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Public person?
Oh, we have, oh, yeah, please come forward, sir. Yes. Name and address for the record.
Billy Crown, six-six-three Wed Street. Our city's mission statement is to serve the public with transparent government focused on progress. Our mission statement doesn't mention giving city park land away free to the county library board, or bulldozing historic buildings under the fraudulent guise of a flood zone, or replacing Turkey Creek Trail with walls or berms. It doesn't mention congesting our streets by packing cities shoulder to shoulder with unaffordable apartments. Our mission statement certainly doesn't mention giving away sixty-plus million dollars of our tax money to rich developers, but it does mention transparent government. Think about that, even if you're not going to listen to the rest of what I have to say. KSA forty-five, Article two sixteen declares the public policy of this state that public records shall be open for inspection by any person, and that this act shall be liberally construed and applied to promote such policy. Since at least nineteen ninety-four, our city policy has not, has been not to charge for inspection of records readily available to the clerk. It might have been before that, but my open records request for those ordinances to find out, in preparation to this, this speech, was a higher price tag than a citizen should have to pay to simply see the ordinances that define our city. The policy not to charge for readily accessible records sounds quite honorable, but we're finding out now that it must have been a lie all along. Because now that someone actually wants to use our open records policy, our staff wants to take that away. The agenda tonight is a blatant defiance of the policy of the state of Kansas. Our clerk, Juliana Penick, wants to make Mariam's open records less open, by, in her words, mitigating the issue of open records. On July nineteenth, two thousand and four, Juliana solemnly swore to support the laws of the state of Kansas, but today she has put an agenda item before you to make it harder and more expensive for Mariam residents to rightfully obtain the open records produced every day by their own tax money. Juliana's agenda item tonight defies the spirit and the policy of the state of Kansas, that public records shall be open for inspection, and I implore you, if you value the oaths that you took in your office, not to proceed with that agenda item. On June second this year, I filed my candidacy with the election office, and on June third, I notified the city and requested equal access to information that the city is providing to my opponent, at no cost to him, I might add. And in less than two hours, the administrator responded, that's not happening. Our administrator denied equal access to a sitting political candidate, that happened right here this year in Mariam, Kansas. On March eighteenth this year, the same administrator just directed staff not to answer simple requests, and to only provide information if legally obligated to do so via open records. This is the reason there are more official open records requests lately. Our admin manufactured that need by his directive to staff. And the city clerk defied state law this year by repeatedly asking for requests on specific forms that are more difficult and require special software or a printer and a scanner to use. We learned last meeting that staff wasted time, and this meeting as well, and money directing our IT personnel, who we're also wanting to hire more of, apparently, to design a new system that mixes up requests and returns broken links to download the, the records. And when citizens don't use that portal, our staff forge citizen signatures to produce records that look like the portal has been used. That's happened multiple times. Our city administrator spent over an hour last month making the case that the transparent government costs too gosh darn much, and you should blame one jerk for trying to get too much information about our city. And our poor city clerk, making over eighty-six thousand dollars a year, just can't keep up with an average of one request every four-point-five business days. That's according to the data on the slides that the admin himself showed you at the last city council meeting. Our city administrator asked you to spend eighty-five thousand dollars a year last month on a new FTE because one records request per week. Really? Responsible administration requires more efficient staff than that. The answer is not hiring more staff, but more efficient staff. You're spending too much time fighting to conceal open records. Last month, our admin actually lamented for over an hour at this podium that we were giving away open records for free, but the average Mariam resident pays over six hundred dollars a year in property taxes to this city. The clerk makes eighty-six grand a year, the admin and his two assistants make over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year of our tax money. That's not free. Our staff are not working for free, our neighbors aren't getting anything for free, we are paying dearly in property and sales taxes for this open government that our clerk is trying to close down. The amount of time and money our current administration is willing to spend to fight transparent government in our city's own mission statement is appalling, and demands change by responsible leadership. Don't do it. Don't close down Mariam's open records tonight or next meeting, don't defy the policy of the great state of Kansas. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, before I call you forward, sir, Ms. Engle, do you, do you want to respond to any of that in reference to some accusations that were thrown out there by this individual?
Well, certainly be happy to share an email that I sent with a resident addressing the request for information, if you're so inclined to let me read it.
If it seems appropriate, I, I think it'd be-
On three eighteen, after a resident was harassing the clerk, I sent the following response to an email requesting information. I'm fully aware of your opinion on this issue, and told her, the clerk, she no longer had to respond to any of your emails unless there was a statutory or legal requirement such as open records requests. From here on, if you have an emergency, please use nine-one-one. If you have a policy concern, feel free to address it with your elected officials. Otherwise, city staff has been directed to forward all of your constant email requests to me, and I will make the determination of how they are addressed. To be clear, this does not prevent you from emailing city staff. It does not prevent them from communicating with you if they choose to. It doesn't prevent you from attending meetings or visiting city hall, et cetera. This simply routes your constant feedback loop through me. I've copied both department heads, city council, and city attorney on this email, so there are no confusion with the issue. Thank you. So again, I have simply routed the frequent chat GPT required feedback from a certain resident to go through me. So again, as you have tasked me with managing the staff and their productivity, and maintaining service levels at levels that our residents deserve and routinely receive when we can provide to them, this seemed like this made the most sense. This also was not the first time this conversation or this type of an email happened to be sent with this particular resident. There have been several face-to-face conversations, as well as emails stating that this behavior is inappropriate, harassing staff, or asking them to do your bidding, to answer your questions, to go to other units of government to seek out their data and provide it to this individual because they likely wouldn't have, be compelled to provide it. This isn't new. This is just, it, it better allows me to understand the draw that one individual, again, in our community, is creating on our staff. And in my opinion, again, the city administrator's opinion, the subsidy of eleven thousand one hundred ninety-nine other residents to offset one individual's need and desire to know everything, which again, we're happy to produce, but we just have to have some sort of measure of control and understand what it is, what's coming in, what's coming out. It is the desire of all staff members to receive an email from residents and answer questions. But again, when it becomes a chat GPT, Google database type of exchange where it just goes on and on and on and on and on, at some point in time, there has to be some sort of control of that. So again, I, to be clear, this does not prevent you from emailing city staff, it does not prevent them from communicating with you if they choose to. I think that summarizes what my one and only email that was sent on this particular date said in terms of requesting information. I don't know if that answers your question, it might be more than you asked, but-
It's, it, it does, sir. Thank you for, for doing that. And I will also go on record to say that I, you were, you were very close to approaching being slanderous, being slanderous to our city clerk, and I don't appreciate it, and I won't tolerate it again in the future. And I would say, or ask our city clerk, would you, as an estimate, say that with what you proposed this evening, that over, my guess is ninety percent of these records are going to be free and available to our public?
Yes. It's only those open-ended requests, those very large requests, that, you know, is going to be affected by these fees.
Yeah.
Simple requests are usually handled fairly easily.
So there is no, no reason to, to make that kind of comment that she is trying to prevent open records from being utilized in the city for people to be able to access that? Over ninety percent are. One individual's causing this problem, and we're addressing that. Do you have-
I just want to add that, at our meeting, at our last meeting, I think the direction was fairly clear that the council was united in saying, we need to do something. And, and so staff has taken this directive. It's not anything that the city clerk single-handedly did.
Did not. Any other comments from any of the council people at this time? Okay, thank you. Okay, sir, I will, I'll call you forward, please come forward, sir. Name and address for the record. Thank you.
Dan Lee, fifty-eight, forty-eight Mariam Drive. How's everybody doing tonight? Good? So, sitting back here listening, it seems like, it appears to me, and probably most of the public, that you're raising the fees of open records requests to try and prevent one person from making a lot of requests, which sounds like. Anyway, since I heard you say earlier that you're going to look at it and then bring it back as an ordinance, what I'd like to see in the ordinance on behalf of the public is, for residents of Mariam, actual residents, should, should probably get like one a quarter, one free request a quarter. And it'd be nice to see that written in the, in the deal, in the ordinance, so that, I would think one, four a year wouldn't be too bad. I know myself, I've made two requests in twenty-twenty-five, so I would just ask that. I mean, it seems pretty reasonable that, that a resident would get, get four requests for free, at no charge. And then, the second part of this, if there's an election year, which it is, and there's two candidates running, they should also get unlimited requests during the time the campaign's going on, because you all get any information you want free. I've, I've been a council member, I was once a challenger, and I was once an incumbent. So when you're an incumbent, you have the advantage, you can get any record you want at no charge. And so the challengers should get records at no charge also. In my opinion. I mean, if, if you don't do it that way, it's unfair to the challenger, because the incumbent has the advantage of getting the free records all they want. And then the last thing is my two records requests. So my first one, I had to ask three times to get what I wanted. Apparently, it wasn't available the first time. So I said, I asked Julie if she'd let me know when it was available. Nothing, nothing. So I ask again, nothing. I ask again, finally I got it. But no email or nothing from Julie to tell me that my request was available now. So it does seem like you're trying to withhold records from the public. And then, most recently, I made another follow-up request about my first one. And, you know, I'm just wanting to know, maybe chief could answer it for me, if Officer Aaron Simmons still works for the city? So, no, no comment? I see. Anyway, I'm just wanting to find out, because, you know, there was some wrongdoing, and the parks director and Aaron Simmons are both at fault for it, and I'm wondering if there's been any training, any discipline, or if they still work for the city. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, just, so, I think you all know, but individually identifiable personnel discussions are not appropriate for open sessions, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. All right. Okay, come forward, sir. Name and address for the record.
My name is Philip Klein, live in Leewood, it's good to be back. I go all the way back to nineteen ninety-five, when I cleaned up the city with the corruption. I'm an expert of open records, and I want to make a statement concerning something the city manager said, that about staff time, when we were fighting the corruption in city of Mariam, we made a hundred and twenty-five requests, and there was no complaining about it. And I just thought I would make that known. Also, too, I'm the first person to ever win damages in the city of Mariam because of Irene French trying to keep Eric Wade's balloon contract away from the city council and from open records. So I just thought, I'd just let you know that, you know, that just because you're a burden of a few, one person doing a few, that we actually have done quite a few over the years, open records requests. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Okay, well, we will move on from this item. It looks like next item up this evening is purchase of two vehicles for the police department. I assume we have Chief McGlaughlin coming forward for that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As usual, I'm up here asking for money again. What you have before you is a request to purchase two vehicles for the police department. These are budgeted items, we put into this year's budget. They are replacement vehicles for our admin fleet investigations. We're replacing two vehicles that are either miled out, one has over a hundred and ten thousand miles, the other one is yearned out, it's over ten years old. This time, as we, normally we buy cars for our admin fleet, we have been buying hybrid vehicles, gas, electric, and they have worked out very well for the city. This time, however, I'm asking that we purchase two fully EV vehicles for this fleet. This will be the first two fully EV vehicles that the police department has purchased- This will be the first two fully EV vehicles that the police department has purchased, probably the first two that the city is looking to purchase. The two vehicles are going to be Chevy Blazers. There's a little bit of a difference between the cost between each vehicle, as you've noticed, if you look in your packet. And the reason for that difference in cost is one's a little bit more expensive because it is a pursuit-rated vehicle, meaning it can be used in patrol. My intent by buying one of those is I am going to equip it so that it can be occasionally used in patrol. We are going data collect on its use to find out how much service we can get out of it, meaning how many hours it can be driven before it needs to be charged, how long it takes to charge, how much draw is on the batteries with the equipment that we will be running. So that way, when we look at it for the future, we'll know about how many EV vehicles we can put into our fleet. It's probably not going to be realistic for us to replace our entire fleet with EVs. There's probably going to be a ratio of one point five, one point seven EV vehicles deemed for every gas patrol vehicle. So that's probably not going to be a realistic push for us. But we would definitely like to look at supplementing our fleet with EV vehicles in the future if the data shows that it is absolutely a cost-effective use in that way. I'd be happy to answer any questions about what we're planning on doing.
Go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
I had two quick questions. One, I think I read in the packet that we would have charging stations added to the parking lot for the police department. Would that be in the stalls where the patrol vehicles are or will be?
No, these are actually going to be in the back corner. We already have big electrical boxes back there that we already plug in or like our signboards and stuff. We'll be connecting to that electrical grid right there and using those parking spaces to recharge our two EVs.
Great, okay, thank you. And then some of these fully EV vehicles have a little bit more issue with maintenance. Will our wonderful public works department be able to maintain them or will they have to go to the dealership?
Ross is going to be learning all about EV vehicles. And yes, it will probably be a combination like our vehicles are right now. Ross does a good majority of our work on our gas-powered vehicles. However, they still are required at times to go into the dealership for maintenance, especially while they're under warranty and stuff like that. But yeah, Ross is going to be loving the EVs, aren't you, Ross? Yeah.
We're going to educate him so much, it's going to be hard to keep him.
Right, right.
Any other questions, Chief? Good, go ahead.
Excuse me. Do any of our neighboring friends have EVs in their police force that you know of?
Leewood has currently two Tesla vehicles. They're not, there's not a lot of difference between the Teslas that they bought versus what citizens can buy. So we were kind of waiting to see if, when the manufacturers caught up and actually started building EV vehicles for police work, which is what Chevy has done on the Blazer platform. So we're kind of excited to try it out and see how it works.
Yeah, I think it's great. I was just curious. Cool, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Cosmier.
Yeah, just, I just have a comment. It sounds like that'd probably be really effective as a pursuit vehicle. We have a Prius that's a plug-in hybrid, so it's not very high-powered, but it has quite a bit of torque when it's on the full electric mode.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to be doing some training with our officers because it'll be more torquey and we'll probably go through more tires and, you know, but we'll, that's part of the process with us doing it this way and easing it into the fleet and taking some, getting some data, so.
Any other questions? Chief McGlaughlin? Well, with that, thanks, sir. I would entertain a motion for this item. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve the purchase of two twenty twenty-six EV Chevy Blazers.
Okay, we have a motion, I have a second. Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Cosmier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like next item up this evening would be the proposed budget summary and presentations. Director Boerth, the voting.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pleased to present the twenty twenty-six recommended budget summary, which you should have received in the packet. And then there's also printed copies in front of you to share if you prefer to look at the printed copy. Perfect. So in front of you, you're going to see that we have a balanced budget. And what that means legally is that our expenditures do not exceed our revenues and our fund balance for twenty twenty-six. What I am really thrilled to bring you is that the general fund and most of our other funds, which you can see a breakdown of all of them on the page four table, we were able to get the expenditures to balance with the revenues for twenty twenty-six. So general fund, that was a note made by our bond council this year. So it was a big effort to try and get that to balance out. So we are not planning to use any fund balance for twenty twenty-six for most of the funds in front of you. So moving into all funds, we are anticipating to spend about forty million in revenues, forty-four, almost forty-five in expenditures. I will remind everyone that our fund balance, while it is growing, we have that set aside for planned improvements that council has identified or put into your plan. So while that does seem like a lot and it is increasing, there are planned improvements for that money. Also, the fund balance, which we will go through for the general fund, is aligned with our policy. As a reminder, it has to be within thirty to thirty-five percent. You will see we are slightly over that, especially when you combine it with risk management. So moving on to the general fund, nothing has significantly changed from the last couple of times that we have talked about both revenues and expenditures. Everything in front of you is exactly what we have spoken on. The mill levy is still set in here to decrease a quarter from the twenty twenty-six rate. The sales and use tax, while you will see that there's a four percent increase over the twenty twenty-five budget, I'd like to point out that it's only a two percent increase over twenty twenty-four actuals. So we anticipate that the two percent increase from what we know we have received, it's still very conservative. For personnel, we have our traditional three percent COLA, two percent merit. Also in front of you are the compensation study adjustments. We budgeted for up to fifteen percent with health insurance. We will not know the official number for that until later on in the year. And then included is also that position we spoke about last time, the technology specialist. And like I said, our fund balance does come out to thirty-eight point three percent of revenues, so it meets our policy. Specifically, the general fund is at thirty-four percent and then risk management is at that four point three, which you can see in front of you. So what is driving the budget? These are the major changes or emphasis that have been added to the, for twenty twenty-six. The CIP has not changed from what you represented last time, except for a thirty thousand dollar increase to the city hall improvements project. Everything else is the same from when council saw it with director, our public works director's presentation, so. But we did have to do a slight increase based on the projected costs that came back as we've been doing the planning for that project. We will also get more into the support for community grants here in a second, but everything else fits into kind of what council has set forth as far as goals and what staff believes is necessary for twenty twenty-six. So in front of you, it's all of the similar community support that has been in prior years. We did have to do slight increases for certain grants, rebates, programs, including the property tax rebates and driveway repair, just based on what we have seen spending, you know, and requests being for certain programs. So we adjusted where necessary, just based on applications and what we have seen historically. There is nothing new on here, but if you would like us to look into something, we're happy to, as always. From, sorry, from twenty twenty-five. So specifically, we have about a five thousand dollar increase for the property tax rebates and a ten thousand for driveway repair. Others, some have been lowered just because we hadn't seen any applications or very, very minimal. So I know one that we decreased slightly was the historic exterior grant. Over time, it has not been utilized to its full potential. So just to help balance the budget, we sort of made everything match actuals, but happy to put any money back or inflate these as council sees fit. Yes, page ninety-one. Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions, Director Boerth?
Okay, moving on. One thing that we have not spoken about is the equipment reserve fund. You can see, these are the major highlights for twenty twenty-six only. In front of you, though, there is further towards the back of the packet, you can see a five-year plan for this fund. This was the directive of all of the departments and what they felt like they needed. So a few of the major highlights are going to be the, sorry, the council chamber presentation system upgrade, which was a request by council. Also included is a new one hundred and thirty thousand dollar salt brine maker system. We've gotten a lot of feedback about winter operations and so that has been slightly moved up in our schedule. Police, we actually have four replacement vehicles, two of which we are requesting, or Ross believes we should do hybrid or EV sedan, so also fits with council's goals. Facilities, we're looking at doing two generators for city hall and the police department. And then any other requests for twenty twenty-six are just standard to what we typically have to do, or they've been on the replacement schedule for many years. So what is next? The budget in front of you, like I said, has not changed very much, but if between now and August twenty-fifth, council would like to see anything change or you would like to get with me and talk about specific details, anything like that, I'm happy to do so because we have officially publicized the public hearing for August twenty-fifth, which we will need council to vote on exceeding the revenue neutral rate, which we will do if you're comfortable moving forward with the rate proposed to you. And then also to adopt the budget. If you are not comfortable doing so, I will need to have those changes ready to be presented by that August twenty-fifth date because we are bumping up to when we have to have the certification of the budget to the county clerk. So the August twenty-ninth date cannot change. So whatever council's prerogative is, I would just need to present that to you or at least options to you on that August twenty-fifth date. So anything that you see fit to change, happy to do so or at least bring that option. But this is the budget that staff feels comfortable bringing forward at this time. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Boerth?
Could you?
Go ahead, Ms. Ans.
I'm sorry. Could you remind me of what the upgrade to the presentation systems? Is it the call-in issue with the phones? I don't know what's been estimated with that, with that money.
Yes, yes. Short answer to the question is yes, but upgrades for remote call-in and just the audiovisual software here in the council chambers.
Thank you.
And the community center will also be getting updates. I'm not sure exactly what those consist of, but similar from what I understand.
Any other questions? Okay, I see none.
Okay, thank you. I'll see you next meeting.
All right, it looks like the next item up would be staff items, the single hauler update. We've got some exciting news, I think.
We do have some exciting news. First of all, I apologize for my voice, but I am okay, promise. I do have a couple of updates for you tonight on single hauler. First of all is while we're not approaching the deadline yet, at some point this year, we're going to need to hear from the HOAs on if they're going to opt in or opt out of the program. So I've been kind of doing my round robin to the HOAs just to have that conversation, not one final time, but just kind of remind them we'll need to know eventually. And so I met with one last week who is actually going to opt in to the city's contract and I still have three to go, but that's pretty good news for our residents. The second one is highlights just hit mailboxes. It does have information about a single hauler. Please remind everybody, if they do have questions, I am almost sure that the questions are on our FAQ page on our website, so please direct them to that. If for some reason the question is not on the FAQ website, please let me know and I will be happy to add it. Our next highlights that comes out for this winter-spring edition, the cover story will be about single hauler. We'll see how trashy we can make that. That was the HOA suggestion for the article. But we'll see, we'll see what that looks like. We'll have more information for all our residents as we continue to move forward in the process with GFL. Speaking of GFL, we've had a number of residents, probably a handful or so now, new residents that have come to town who have not been able to acquire trash service, whether that be just the existing haulers are not interested in establishing new contracts. I'm not sure. I haven't reached out to the haulers directly. But we are working very closely with GFL to come up with a solution for those that currently don't have trash service. We didn't really think this was going to happen so soon, especially still being over a year out, but here we are. So we're working very quickly with GFL. Hopefully, we'll have some solutions here soon, like this week soon. I was on the phone with them today, so hopefully we'll come up with some solutions here shortly. I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Klein.
Actually, I have one. Does our new contract with GFL have a provision that in the event we terminate their contract, whether it be in three weeks or three months from whenever we set that date, that they have to continue to provide service to all current and new residents? Do you know if that's in our, our new contract?
Before November first of next year or following?
The, the one that will start in twenty twenty-seven or shortly before.
I will look into that. I can't answer that off the top of my head. Sorry.
Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
Can you tell me if the inclusion of the HOA will impact the household cost of trash pickup?
It will, just because economies of scale, the more people that opt into the contract, the less expensive it's going to be per resident. It's not substantial. It's, don't quote me, less than a dollar per resident per month. However, that adds up over time.
Okay, any other questions, Ms. Gardner?
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. All right, it looks like the next item up is the CIP update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The August CIP update is in your packet. I do have a couple of updates that I wanted to talk about and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. The gentleman that came tonight had some questions about our twenty twenty-five street and drainage project, so I talked to him about that. But Water One was delayed. They had a lot of main breaks. It was really hot this summer. They didn't get the project done as quickly as they wanted. They're done now. I went out there and drove it today. They still have some steel plates that they're supposed to be cleaning up and taking off the site, but the work is actually done. McAnanny is on board now and they have two stormwater crossings. They completed one at Hardy at sixty-first and then they're working on Craig. We were hoping to get that done before school started, but there was a lot of utilities in the way, so it's been a little bit of a delay. We've been coordinating with the school district and thanks to council member Chaveta, trying to make that as easily a transition as possible. The contractor has agreed to start a little bit later on school day, so starting at eight fifteen and ending at two forty-five until next Tuesday, then that stormwater work at that end of the project should be done. Then they'll start doing their normal, they have some replacement of pipe near Antioch, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and their normal thing. So there will still be, there could be some plaguing operations. They're down to one lane along sixty-first. We're trying to, you know, move as fast as we can to, to ease that burden of school traffic. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that project.
Any questions, Director Kempkin? Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
I don't have a question because we've already talked about it, but I just want to publicly say thank you for working with the school because I know Ms. Lepenta, the principal, really appreciates it and I know it's a headache for all the residents as well as the parents. And so we just want to get it done as quick as possible. So thanks for working with them and trying to get school started as easily and safely for everyone as possible.
Yes, I wish we would have had it done, but.
I know, but that's okay. It's the reality we're living in, so thank you for working with them.
Yeah. I have another update on the seventy.
Hold on just a second, Ms. Kempkin.
I was just going to ask about Forty-Ninth Street. Just kind of the general schedule. I know it's been torn up and closed off and on.
It's been.
I know there's a lot of utility work going on that's not us per se, but do we have like a rough timeline of what's next and when it might be done? we have like a rough timeline of what's next and when it might be done?
So it's been slow with the rain. The utilities are all, for the most part, done. There's a couple little, the AT&amp;T cabinet at the end and some Evergy stuff, but for the most part, the utilities are complete. Amino's working between Switzer and Knox. They installed new curb on both sides. There's a couple areas, like the radius, that they're working on. They're backfilling the curb, and they are supposed to start on driveway replacement. We have a number of driveways that were going to go all the way, you know, some gravel replacements and some driveway aprons that we're replacing. They were supposed to start today, but they were rained out, but that's the next stage of what they'll be working on.
Thank you.
Thanks. I do have an update on the 75th Street bridge repair, finally. So a little recap on that. We had an interlocal with Overland Park, and to, to work, based on a bridge inspection, they found that the bridge, one of the piers was deteriorating, and the expansion joint over time, with all the sand and dirt that gets on the road, went down, and, and that needs to be replaced. They bid at the first time and had no bidders. The second time they bid it, they only had one bidder. So they finally decided to select someone for design build, which was Pyramid Contractors. They, we requested that they look at two options, one, keeping the bridge open during construction, and one, closing it, and what the cost would be. Unfortunately, they've come back, and they have told us that keeping it open under live traffic is not feasible. The main reason is that there's a sanitary sewer that runs right next to Pier Two, which needs to be rehabilitated. So to put the shoring, now we can't have the shoring as close to the pier as we would like, so to move it farther back to get out of the way of the sanitary sewer, that's creating un, un, I'm trying to think of the word. It's a deflection in the, in the bridge deck that isn't within tolerance. So unfortunately, they can't, short of relocating the sanitary sewer or other options, they really can't keep it open with live loads. So what they're recommending is a 50-day closure, 26 days for the pier replacement, 24 days to replace the expansion joint. They are recommending that it be closed March 2nd and opened back up May 8th. They haven't talked to the hospital or, or the school district yet, so depending on those conversations and the conversation tonight, it's possible that, you know, that could change. They're proposing putting in the shoring in November, so that way we don't have to worry about, you know, anything happening with the pier. So they're going to put that shoring in, wait to get through the winter, and that's when they wanted to start in March. Talked to Chief Long, and he's looked at the response times, and if you have any detailed questions, you'll need to ask him. But basically, what they do is they put that in the CAD system so that there's, recognizes a closure at that time, and then Shawnee, if there's responses on that side, they would pick up some of those calls as opposed to Overland Park. And if you have more questions, I'm sure he would be happy to answer those. The detour route for the bridge would be going up Govera and over to Shawnee Mission Parkway. Keep in mind that the interchange, the bridge over the interchange will stay open, so if you want to get off and on there, you can. So you're going eastbound from, westbound on 75th. You can go northbound on I-35 or southbound. You just can't go further over onto the railroad bridge. We know that that will be the posted detour, but there will be, you know, obviously, people that are familiar with it will probably cut through on West Frontage or Antioch, and so we will see extended traffic on our streets during that time.
When, when are we doing the traffic study at I-35 and Shawnee Mission Parkway?
It's underway now.
Okay. Will it be done before that detour is routed that way?
It's, they're working on that now and looking that. It's, they've got the model done. We just don't have the final results to present it, but it won't be.
I just want to make sure that we're not getting an increase in traffic from the detour in our model.
Oh, no.
In our study.
No, that will, that will be completed by then. The option that Pyramid's coming up with to close that for 50 days is almost $2 million. It is within budget, so we would split those costs with Overland Park, and that was already authorized in our, in our local. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Kempkin? Oh, go ahead, Ms.
I have a quick one. And I'm sorry I didn't reach out about this earlier. We just heard about it before the meeting. On Maston and 62nd Street, just south of the apartments that goes to the Merriam Gardens Rehab and Healthcare, I've been hearing there are a lot of potholes on that area before it turns into the private drive. So I don't know if we're responsible for taking care of that street, or if it's the apartments that, Maston and 62nd.
Maston and 62nd. I'd have to look at that.
Okay.
I can get back with you on that.
Great, thank you.
If it's a private road, we wouldn't be responsible.
Right, that's why I'm, one way is West 62nd Street and one way is Camino Royale. And then once it gets to Merriam Gardens, it becomes a private street. So I'm not sure who takes care of which side, or if we just do the one way or what.
I will go out and look at it tomorrow and then get back with you in the council report on Friday.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Go ahead, Mr. Chrisman.
Yeah, so I had Evergy out in my backyard and along my street, trying to clear some limbs that I think had some, due to some storm damage. Do you know if that's still like underway for the foreseeable future, or do you have transparency on that?
I don't know anything about that, but I can try to talk to them.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
Okay. I'll get with you on the location.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, Director Kempkin? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see. It looks like informational items. We just have the park and rec advisory board meeting minutes. Has anybody has any questions for Schmo, but? No? Okay. Well, I assume we have no executive session this evening. Anything for staff? Mr. Engel?
No executive session, just a couple of updates. Events this week, on Friday, we've got our free day at the community center. Also, that evening, we have concert in the courtyard from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Both of those always well received. And then we received some news that our finance director, Megan Borth, received the Rising Star Award from the national women in public finance organizations. So I wanted to share that acknowledgement for her. I did do a little homework. That actually is a real organization. It is a real national organization, and it has a fantastic picture and read up of the city of Merriam, and brings great credit upon the city and herself, so wanted to publicly acknowledge that. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Engel? Okay, I see no questions. Mr. Engel, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Sands.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, for a motion, a second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.